Six o'clock, and we call the meeting to order. We have minutes from May 2nd, 2022, January 10th, 2022, January 10th, 2022, 22. Executive session, an open session, July 12th, 2021, and April 12th, 2021. Has everyone had a chance to review these minutes?
Mm-hmm.
And if so, would someone like to make a motion to accept them?
All of them?
Well, we can do it in order. We can do it in order.
Make that motion.
All right, someone second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye.
So Rick Shepard voted on nae only.
Nae only, okay. Formates, do we have any formates tonight?
We do not.
Wow. Let Rick take a seat. So no formates?
No.
Okay, we've got the zoning board of appeals agenda. Does anyone have anything they want to discuss on that?
Are the actual items included in our packet, or are they same as last month?
It's the same as last month, because they weren't going to have a quorum, so they didn't meet.
Oh, that's why just the cover sheet.
That's why there were no notices.
Did you find out any more about the, sorry, the ice cream thing on Center Street, Center Ave?
Um, no, just that they have a building apartment for renovation.
Okay.
Sean, do you know anything about that?
I'm sorry.
Mary Lou's?
Mary Lou's?
Yeah.
I have nothing to say about that.
No, 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 the center, Center Ave, next to Spencer's, that's on the zoning board. They're doing something with ice cream there.
Oh, no.
I don't know that vaguely. I'm not representing the zoning board, but I'm not really sure why he's going to the zoning board. Mr. Anderson had a garage, a fact that he had a prior tenant who parked whatever truck was in there, and now he redid the garage, the building from it. Instead of the other tenant with the truck, he has a ice cream truck parking there.
Ice cream truck parkings?
Yes. And right, he did the one.
So can we go and get pizza and then ice cream?
No, it's not.
Let's get to the important thing.
It's not an ice cream store, it's just a different type of truck. This is, I have, again, I do not represent Norwood Engineering, is, there was a concern downstairs that it could change of use. I completely disagree with this. But he was told apparently to go to the zoning board and get it approved. That's all I know. If I'm saying it wrong to anyone watching, apologize, but that's all I know.
Thank you.
But it is not a retail sale of ice cream out of the garage, it's actually Spencer's building.
Well, that's too bad.
Yeah.
All right, so nothing further to discuss? All right, it being 6:05, request to amend street drainage on Roslin Street. Do we have anyone here? That? Mr. Riley.
Do what I apologize for not previously talking to him, it's on microphone. Sean Riley, 500 Washington Street, representing Abington Investments, which is Glenn the Point, Glenn the Point Junior, the older guy is Glenn the Point. This is just revisiting a previously approved two lot subdivision off of Spruce Street, which is known as Roslin Street. And the only thing this is a request for was, if you recall, this was a private way with open drainage, it was going to be a swale on the side of the road, on the side where the new houses were going. As they were actually constructing the road, the swale went the, pretty much the entire length of the roadway. So as everything was coming into form, and the foundations of the house and the driveways are going in, it just, they were looking to improve the aesthetics of it all. Because now they had a swale in the front yard of each house. So if you, if a guest came by and didn't park in the driveway, but parked in the street, they literally couldn't walk on the front lawn, they'd have to go around the swale and go up the driveway. So they asked their engineers to look at, can we eliminate the swale in front of the houses and just reconfigure the swale that is in the entranceway to the street? Which is what the proposal is. So instead of, I think, a two-foot deep swale from, between the street and the first lot, it's now a three-foot deep swale. And the towns engineer has reviewed this and said there's been absolutely no negative impact to drainage, it still collects the water. We're adding a Cape Cod berm on that right side of, that same side of the road, so any rainwater will be guided into the swale. So it still acts as efficiently as the previous design, it's just a lot more aesthetic. So now, the end result is, the two houses on Roslin Street just have front yards that extend all the way up to the street. But the drainage itself still works, and that's been confirmed by our engineer and the towns engineer. So we're looking for the board to just vote to approve that minor revision to the subdivision, the approved subdivision plan, so they can continue construction. Upon completion, they will then submit the as-built subdivision plan with this minor alteration caked into it.
What comments?
Just want to, this is approved plan, so this was prior approved, showing the swales. So what is, how's the water, how's the water, I can understand, how's the water gathered down at the street point? It looks like it's water being gathered in front of the houses and brought underneath the driveway and then to the next house, and then underneath the driveway?
Yeah, what they're doing was, they pitch the road
Yeah.
From the side to that side, so all the neighbors on the other side, there's no water goes in.
Right.
It's fixed from here, and here goes into the swale.
Oh, okay, so what were these? What did these catch?
The drainage came right straight across here, and they had no front yard.
Oh, so how are they catching the water? So just on the road?
That's eliminated, that's eliminated, it starts right here, on this corner that actually goes in.
Okay. Oh, so that's where it was just to catch the water coming off the road? I thought it was coming off the property.
Nope.
So I guess that's, my question is, the water that's coming off here to here, how is that being directed into here now?
Yeah, they, it's pitched this way, and this way. So it goes past the side seat, and then everything goes into.
Yeah, I guess my concern is, is the water that's coming
Cape Cod berm's been.
Up here, is this going to now run basically through these, between the two houses, back this way?
No, it'll, it'll stay right on the road, whatever stage on the road.
It'll stay on the road?
Rick, previously, the side of the road that had the drainage swales did not have any berm, so the, the water off the road would sheet right into the drainage swale.
Right.
There's now, where the drainage swales are coming out, Cape Cod berm will now be installed.
I understand, but the berms don't cover the driveways either.
Right, it goes by the driveway, the driveway.
Well, so what I'm concerned about is that it's going to go down the driveways and down into the yards, into the properties.
By the pitch of the driveway, correct me if I'm wrong, the foundations are higher than the, the street, so it, it won't go up the driveway.
Pitch is back down.
Right, I'm, like I said, I'm just concerned, and I understand what our engineer said, is that, you know, if you start at the back end of the street
Yep.
Following there, it starts to go, you know, diagonally across.
Yep.
I'm, I'm concerned that it's going to go down either of those two driveways, and then across the yards, rather than into the swale.
I'm not an engineer, but all I can say is, our engineer and your engineer looked at it and.
It can't get out, it can't get out.
Okay, so there's a bit lip or something there that prevents the water from coming up and over?
It'll, that's, I mean, it's going to actually go up, which
Okay.
Or it's just up, it's just down the road.
So it catches the berm, redirection of the driveway, next berm, then keep on going.
Okay.
We open the berm up here.
So make sure it doesn't go that way.
The grade is actually higher, so the grade in the Johnsons, I think, where he was, they come across the, the grade in the yard is actually higher, so the town's actually pitched out.
So the grade of the driveway is a little bit higher than the grade of the, okay.
So there'll be no grade.
Okay.
All right. Any other comments? Of course, we have a letter of reference that Rick had mentioned, June 1st, 2022, to Planning Board regarding this project from David Johnson, Norwood Engineering. Recommendation, we have reviewed the proposed changes with the design engineer, as well as the documents referenced above, and find that the proposed amendment is acceptable and may be approved. So bearing that in mind, would someone like to make a motion to approve this, you know, with mention of the June 1st letter?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Second? All right, all of us in favor? Aye. Aye, all right.
Aye. Thank you, I'll make it sure it gets done.
All right, I'm going to move ahead a little bit. And 6:15, well, it's 6:10, but.
You gotta wait till 6:15.
We've got to wait till 6:15, so we're going to have a little bit of a break here.
You want to discuss the Economic Development Council and the master plan goals?
Mm-hmm. So, in our meeting packet, we have the master plan update from 2019, and talks about discussion of a development of an economic development council, and also discussion of master plan goals, and discussion of amendments to multifamily zoning district law. So I know we got this ahead of time, as folks have had a chance to review it, I'd like to get some discussion on this. Anyone want to talk about this at all?
Because I was reading, and it came across that, where you talked, this economic development council. One thing that I, I mean, actually, what I notice out there, or what I've seen out there, is that when, unless you make phone calls and try to find people, you know, you have to, you're building something, waiting for someone to discover where your place is. The way these places have been filled, in other places, I know I have clients that get phone calls and things like this all the time, is to some, have someone actively, might know somebody, make phone calls to someone that may, see if they might be interested in coming, try to, basically reaching out rather than waiting for people to come to them. So a committee, and I think it mentions in there about being some of the, well, being the owners of the businesses, being part of that, I think they need a guide, but I think that, I think that's what their strong input would be, is using their connections to maybe reach out and somehow develop this into a, something, into something that's, well, something we've talked about maybe the town planner doing, being able to reach out and, reach out to people that might be interested in coming. Anyway, that's what I, that's what I was thinking about that.
Abington had an Abington Business Council. I worked on that with district local technical assistance money when I was employed by the Old Colony Planning Council. And it sort of went into hibernation, but, you know, you know, hearing what you just said, Jim, as far as having a town planner coordinate with that, you know, to get this thing going again. And also another thing that was done by Old Colony Planning Council, by me and others, was to create a guide to doing business within the town, which is still on the town website, I believe.
We're looking to update that.
But, yeah, because it was written several years ago.
Yep, yep, there's just, there's some information that's not up to date, and so we printed it, we're going to go through it over the summer, update the information, and then get the, either have OCPC do a revised one, or have them send it to us in a format that we can do it ourselves. But we hope to have that done at the end of the summer and get the new one posted to the website.
Yeah.
I mean, the one that's currently there has actually got a ton of good information, but some of the people, the staff, and some of the other stuff, not there anymore, so.
Yeah, I guess my concern is, it's nice to have that, I'm glad we did it, but there's no one doing the outbound marketing for the town. You know, it's, it's like, okay, we're open for business, here we are, just come find us, but I don't know, I feel like other towns might do a better job of making known what land or property is available for development in this town. I'd like to know how other towns, or the towns that are doing it well, how they're doing it. I mean, Marlboro is just, they pour resources into marketing its town for development, and I wouldn't necessarily recommend going that way, but, you know, people say that there isn't any land left in Abington. Well, I mean, there's dozens and dozens of acres sitting up north of Route 18 that's underdeveloped. And, you know, that's what I like people to know about, when they're trying to figure out where to start, where to build something. You know, there, there is land, and, but just kind of waiting for someone to come by, I don't know if this is the best strategy. So I would like to figure out more how other towns do that outreach. And kind of, you know, where, do they advertise someplace? Do they, how do they promote it?
So I actually did reach out to OCPC, and they would be willing to have a conversation with you guys, send somebody over. The person I asked for, we're not sure if her grant funding is getting, that she'll get renewed July 1st.
They have, Dottie Fool Genetti is the person you're talking about.
That's, yeah.
But there's another person over there who's their economic development planner, name escapes me at the moment, but she was an alternative to Dottie.
Okay.
You know, also in here, they talked about the redo. I love acronyms. The Regional Economic Development Organization, that this would be done through Chris Cooney, you know, the Metro South Chamber of Commerce. And this is on, what, third from the last page on this. But it talks about the redos are funded through the Mass Office of Business Development, partnerships between businesses, local government, and the state to provide resources to grow and retain existing businesses. And Metro South Chamber in Brockton has been designated as a redo of the area, including Abington. Metro South Chamber has already reached out to the town, suggested site or sites that could be appropriate for development. Town needs to work with the redo and others to identify specific sites and buildings for industrial and commercial uses and projects. So it's a necessary prerequisite to identify land sites and/or buildings that the community seems, seems as appropriate development sites per chapter 43D. So again, that's another resource that we could tap into.
Metro South?
Metro South Chamber, the redo, the Regional Economic Development District. And this was cited in the most recent Old Colony Planning Council's
The update.
The most, which was a couple of years ago.
2019, yeah, all right. So I'm waiting to hear about Dottie, if I can't, then I will go to Plan B.
Joanne Zegman.
Jo, okay, yep, I'm working with Joanne on something else right now, too, so I can ask her if she'd be willing. But, so maybe September, October?
Mm-hmm.
Since we're not meeting in August, in July, it might be quick to get that turned around.
Does, I'm sorry, I thought you were, I'm sorry, I thought you were finished. Does South Shore Chamber of Commerce do anything like this, or are they focused mostly on housing?
South Shore Chamber of Commerce does this, but it's, Abington's in Brock-
Oh, it's in the Metro South.
Yeah, Metro South area, in Metro South redo.
I was going to say, they have Quincy and
At Quincy and Waymouth, and things like that in Rockland. But, I mean, they've worked in the past in Abington, but really, I think the focus is going to be on the Metro South Chamber.
So I can reach out to them and see who can attend.
And if there's anyone here in the audience who wants to mention how they find out where there's available commercial parcels, I'd be interested to hear, too.
I did, I, I will mention this, that when I worked at Old Colony, I did, for several communities, I created lists of available properties. And I don't want to add something that loses workload, but it is possible to, you know, go on the town's assessors list, for example, and find vacant commercial industrial properties and things like that. And that's just something that I did, working for Old Colony.
But is that something that's used by developers?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because you put that list, Rick, you put that list on the town website, and you mentioned that, you know, that there is a list of available properties, and it's on the town website, so that could potentially be used by developers. I know Stoughton has such a list, Town of Easton has such a list, if you want to look on their websites, and I think Pembroke does, too.
I guess my concern is, you know, if I'm a larger commercial developer looking for, you know, 20 acres of land, I might not even think to check Abington. It just, it just might not even be on my radar. So is there a way to more, put us out there so that someone says, wherever they look for these things, oh, Abington, never would have thought of that, 20 acres, Route 18, let's go check it out?
So, I mean, for right now, I can actually ask the assessors to prepare that type of list, I think they have the capacity to do that. And then I can have our social media coordinator put it out on social media, we can put it, we've set up on our webpage, a separate, we separated, I think it was residents and business, but we separated, we now just have a separate business page. And we can put it up there, like the guide is there, social workforce, all that stuff, people who are looking for employees, or all of that stuff, all of those links are there, anything I get from the state goes there, and we could put this list up there.
Okay.
And maybe put it under news on the website. I mean, I don't know how much more we can do without then start having to spend
Yeah, I mean.
Money we don't actually have right at this moment.
To take an ad in New England Business Journal.
Right.
For example, but you know something? If we did create such a list like this, and it was on the town website, you know, we could go to the Metro South Chamber and have them publicize that, too. And Metro South Chamber does a, does a profile of business guide, a profile of communities. And if we created such a list, we could put that in the profile of the community, you know, that Abington has a list of available sites and properties. They come out with this every year.
Yep.
Since I've retired, I don't really look at it every year, but I know that this is something that they do prepare and do put out. And, you know, I could get a copy, I'm sure, you know, could contact the chamber and get a copy of this thing just to show everyone.
All right, so I will take that, I'll have the assessors prepare that list, if, if they can. I don't know why they couldn't. And then we'll get it on our website, and on our social media, and then I'll reach out to the Brockton Chamber, or the Metro South Chamber, and see how they can help us get that out there as well.
So I think going forward, this might be a continuing item on the agenda.
Yep.
While we, while we work on this, and if Liz, if you could get that list of properties together.
Yep.
That would be great.
I think part and parcel of that conversation as well, as the supplement points out, is many communities have experienced success by employing a town planner with knowledge, expertise, experience in business development, which I think is exactly what you're talking about, Rick. Somebody who helps you make that connection
Yep.
Between what we have to offer and what they're looking for.
Yep.
So I mean, I think that this conversation should root back to the notion of having a planner.
Yep.
But in the meantime, like I say, just having this list of properties
Sure.
Would be a great step toward, you know, making what's available and for development properties in town, and if we can get that publicized through the website, through social media, through the Metro South Chamber of Commerce. I know, you know, I worked with Chris Cooney for a long time, I know he'd be great to work with on this.
Okay, great, and if you guys have other ideas, I think baby stepping, like if, if we don't put a ton of stuff on my plate, I can do smaller projects.
Yep.
Added with some of the other stuff, like we're doing the hazard mitigation update right now, and so there's, we've got our little project down here with the exceders getting renovated, so stuff like that is starting to happen, we're going to do some stuff at Island Grove, so, but I am going to have tiny, tiny, little part-time help this summer, so I can do other, like I can have him do stuff, and I can do other projects. So if you've got stuff, email me, and I can email the, email the board and get a feel for it, and see if we can bang some stuff out this summer. Or at least if you have ideas that need funding that would qualify for CPA funding, they do their stuff in the fall. Am I correct, the applications start like October, November?
Mm-hmm.
So if that stuff is, if what you're looking for, then we can start to look at CPA funding for projects, and if that, like enhance, you know, any kind of town enhancements do you think would be beneficial and stuff like that?
Mr. Riley has a statement.
Based on my past experience with some of the larger commercial developers who came into Abington, one of the, one of the things that they valued was the fact that Abington is unique in that we have four state highways that cross through, we have, you know, 123, 139, 58, and 18. That's why yellow freight came to Abington of all places, because they basically were in the middle of a hub of a wheel, where they could kind of go out east, west, north, south. You know, we were very fortunate in Abington to have a couple of national businesses, Lowe's, Target, Walmart, which is unheard of for a lot of small towns, we're very fortunate. And yet, at the same time, we have two small-town district, uh, small-town centers that we need to kind of treat those differently and help the small business, which is not an easy thing to do. So, you know, we all have to kind of work together to make this happen. But I think the highway locations, and obviously the intersections, become very valuable to certain types of businesses who want that pass-by traffic, whereas others can locate in a small downtown area. But that, I just wanted to mention that, that that might be part of the, the sales technique on your website, that it, that might strike a chord with someone who's looking for that type of, you know, the four highways intersections.
We could also get traffic information from Old Colony Planning Council as far as, you know, traffic counts and capacity, because traffic counts are always useful for businesses. You know, for example, we know 18 has a really high traffic count, and so it's 123. But as far as, I mean, there was a reason why Lowe's located where they were, and Target and Walmart, and Stop &amp; Shop, and even Wendy's, because these are high-traffic locations. It screws over the North Abington Centers and the Abington Centers, unfortunately, but as far as, you know, the available land that's available is primarily on the 123 and 18 corridors, so, anyway. All right, any more? All right, good. It being 6:15, well, actually, about 6:25, site plan review, 657 Bedford Street. Mr. Riley.
Hey, Sean Riley, 500 Washington Street, representing Tom and Jan Real Estate LLC. With me tonight is Tom O'Connell, the principal of the LLC, and Dan O'Wig, the designer, who has put together all the plans for us. This is regarding the property at 657 Bedford Street. To acclimate you, it is on Route 18, right next door to the medical and dentistry building on the corner of Shar Avenue, Bedford Street, or Route 18, which is a state highway, in that location. There is currently a single-family home on the property, it's 37,926 square feet, so just shy of an acre of, of land. And it is in the Highway Commercial zoning district, and there is no wetlands on the property, and it's not in the local floodplain or anything like that. We're proposing to renovate the existing home, kind of keep the architecture, some renovations have already started, keep, keep our guys working. And we construct an additional two-unit building, and additional, and a three-unit building to kind of match the architectural detail. Every one of the dwellings will only be limited to two bedrooms, there'll be a garage parking space for each unit, and a outdoor parking space for each unit, so each unit gets the two spaces. And then there'll be additional parking, a total of 18 parking spaces on the site, six guest parking spaces. Only 42% of the lot will actually have, be covered by impervious surfaces, meaning buildings or pavement, so basically, the majority of the property is covered by landscaping or green grass or trees. Everything in the plan conforms to all the setbacks, all the buildings conform to all the zoning setbacks, there'll be limited site lighting, because it's just a residential use, of basically porch lighting. There'll be a new cedar fence going up to replace the existing fencing, and you saw the detailed plan, the landscaping plan that Mr. O'Wig put together, that calls for the planting of six maple trees, 33 arborvitae, four Collinor ginkgo trees, 43 shrubs, being rhododendrons, side ranges. So it'll be a well landscaped, kind of an attractive use on this property. There's currently no stormwater management on the property, so it has, one, a new stormwater management has been designed to be put onto the property, so water will be better collected, and in fact, it will reduce the amount of water that naturally flows onto neighboring properties now, so that'll be improvement regarding stormwater. The, the questions, one of the things we'd like to talk, the whole point of the site plan review meeting is to kind of get some feedback, and Mr. O'Connell is here to hear your feedback. We know that Norwood Engineering submitted a review letter, had some great commentary that we're trying to, try to absorb, and I'm happy to see the fire department's here, because we want to hear from them. This is step one of the process, we're not looking for approval tonight, we're not expecting that, we want to kind of keep evolving this plan until it's something that Mr. O'Connell's happy with, and the fire department and the board is happy with. I have talked to the water department, as you know, there was a moratorium in effect, and they now have a new policy, which I just got a copy of and gave it to Dan today, it's 26 pages we're going to go through, but there is a procedure now where new construction, you can basically pay a fee per unit, or go save water with some, you basically have to meet with the water commissioners, kind of like how the sewer board did it when they had the sewer moratorium, if you could save some sewer, or buy, pay into a fund that they could use to kind of improve the system, water department's doing something similar. These units, as the board may well be aware, a two-unit condominium on average uses only about 100 gallons a day. A single-family house, they usually allocate roughly 250 gallons a day. So this is not a heavy water use. I don't think that's going to be an issue at all. It's just basically either paying, paying the fees that are now required, the fees have been increased, or if the water commissioners give us an idea or request to go fix an issue that they've been having, then we would invest in that repair or upgrade as their request. But that meeting will be held after we kind of move forward and get this plan resolved because we want to know, we want to show them the final plan. This plan would also have to eventually go to the zoning board for the special permit for the residential use in the Highway Commercial. There is, single-family houses right next to us are budding us on all sides with the exception of the medical building. So it's, having a residential use here is not kind of uncharacteristic. There are a lot of residential uses right across the street is Harbor One Bank and the apartments, you know, if you know, on the corners, two of the corners on Shar Avenue are apartment complexes. So this is certainly not out of the ordinary there. And I think you'll be impressed with the work that Mr. O'Connell does, the quality and the amount of landscaping and the architecture that we've put together. But as I said before, this is a work in progress, so I'm not going to waste a lot of time with you. I'd rather hear from you and hear from the fire department if we don't, if we could. I know Dave Johnson from Norwood's not here, but we do have a copy of his letter. Some of the drainage things, I was talking with Dan, are issues that he can easily address. In fact, some of the issues that were noted were really because of a misprint on the plan, which we'll correct. The soil test logs were from a different round of soil tests, so we'll update that and correct that, but that'll all be resubmitted to Norwood Engineering. So it's an attractive style. It's obviously a needed housing in Abington. It's on Route 18, which can obviously handle the limited amount of traffic that this will create, but I would like to just kind of ask maybe we get the fire department or the board's feedback, and we'll be glad to have a little conversation tonight as to where you'd like us to proceed. All right?
Board comments.
Sean, could you speak again to the work that's being done there now? What's the nature of that?
Just basically, we, he's trying to preserve the building. Now, we're not trying to get ahead of the game and assume that you're going to approve this plan, and that's going to happen, but what we would like to do is preserve that house. It was in kind of rough shape, so they're just basically redoing the envelope of the building, putting up the new siding and everything. Eventually, as this progresses, and we hope it will progress, there'll be interior work done to kind of redo everything, bring it all up to code, you know, up to, there'll still be a two-bedroom house, and all the other units will be two-bedroom. That's as far as we're going right now until we kind of see where this goes.
Yeah, this would, the existing structure would become one of the...
It would be a standalone, what we're proposing right now is the three buildings. So this is the house that you're asking about.
Yeah.
And then there would be two units next to it detached from the house.
I see.
And then three units to the rear. This is Bedford Street here.
Yep.
The driveway coming, and this is the medical building on the corner of Shar Avenue. There's a single-family house here, another one here, the single-family houses out here. This is out on Washington Street. These are kind of rather long lots on Washington Street. So that would be the proposal. The entrance here, we intentionally put the entrance away from the single-family house and only goes to the commercial user. I've updated a comment that these are somewhat close, and they are. But we thought that would be better than heaven over here, but again, it's where we want to hear your feedback, because this is all on paper. It's not used to change on paper, then it's just on paper. So if you have any, you know, things that really don't seem to be right, things you'd like to consider for all the years.
So basically, it's just the driveway, the main driveway for this is going to be off of 18, right between the medical building and, or like where my eye doctor is right now, that medical building right there. But that's where the driveway will be, it will be between that, and there won't be a driveway off of 18.
Yep. Well, this is Route 18 here.
Yep.
Heading towards Witten in this direction. Shar Avenue is where my eye doctor is. Here's the medical building. Last week, this building, I don't know where it is somewhere. Harbor One is over here. This is a house with a driveway right now up to Route 18.
Yeah.
That house would stay the same. Our question was, as we were discussing things, that we put our driveway over here, close to the single-family, we'll put it over here.
Close to...
Close to the medical building. Obviously, because of the location of the house, you know, we can only put it right there if you want to keep it away from the house and put it over here, as opposed to kind of right in the middle of the property. That kind of is hard to work with, right? So we thought this was the better design. There's not going to be a lot of traffic with only six two-bedroom units, you know, I don't think, and we're certainly not going to wallow in the medical facility. They'll, they generate more traffic than we will, but we thought it'd be better than putting it down here. But, and that's, that's why we're here, is to have a site plan review.
So will the architecture of the existing house change?
You want to talk, Tom? Or Dan? Do that. Dan Owick.
I'm one of the four people who've worked on these plans. I've been working on special permits for 30 years or so. My son Oliver is a registered architect, and he did these plans. And they're all to be Cape, Cape-like, gray, white, and black in color, you know, soft colors. Think it's an attractive building. We had Neil Murphy do the surveying and PE and engineering, and we had John Sullivan do the soil evaluations, and he's also a PE. And the, if I can go through, the existing site has water rain and sewer here. These are the six test logs that we did. The only test log that we hit any water was models at 78 inches on number four. So the test logs that are shown on the, the plans that are coming up are incorrect. They were, there were two sets of test pits that were done, two separate properties about a week apart, and somehow they got switched. So we've rectified that. This is, this is a ventilated area right here, a few trees, mainly pine, probably should be taken down. There is a few sheds, the garage. This is a summary of the, of the site plan, and we have 100 feet wide coming in at this point and 20 feet wide going through the center. And we locate it here, right next to the, uh, building that's, uh, in the north, being away from the residents of the south. We've shown our street lighting, four street lights, and then we're using the torches for lighting the each unit. We have three buffer areas, plantings, vents. There are two retaining walls here and here, both less than four feet. This is an option plan that we were, I called the fire chief this morning to see if I could talk to him about what his major concerns were, and we proposed our main entrance to be here, 20 feet wide, with a fire lane 90 feet long in the front, a stabilized fire lane. And right now, you couldn't pull a fire truck in there because the grade slants. But in the grading here, we have a 1% grade here, and we can make this dead level, and we can even curb it. It depends on what the fire chief wants. So that was our plan. I lived 30 years next to Harry Blanchard, who was the fire chief in Dexbury, so I'm sensitive to, you know, the location of hydrants. This is an existing location, this is a proposed location. There are two locations. So we were asking for the fire chief and his associates to make an input here. The alternative to that would be not having an entrance here next to the dental office, but at this point, and it can be 25 feet wide or wider if somebody likes, but, but it comes in here and then dead ends here. It could have also an emergency access out here with a stabilized H20 loading access way. There could be grass. So you can see, we have two plans right now, and both have a fire lane out front. We think this is, this is an appropriate place for a fire truck or pumper to be. Our drainage, our drainage is, this is existing conditions and water sheds. I just want you to know that we, we have done a lot of analysis of this. This is the proposed condition, reducing the amount of runoff that goes to the dental office. There's two areas of detention, subservice detention areas, one that handles the roof runoff here, and all of the site drainage here, and then discharges through a waterway right here in the corner. This is the planting plan, shows all the planting along three of the property lines as well as the interior planting. We're completely regrading the site so that it's much flatter. Right now, it drops. We flattened this out, this is a 1% grade, and this driveway is a 2% grade. So we're talking, you know, minimal grades here. The other plan that I want, this is, this is showing you, the date was December 7th or something here, or it's January 7th, it should have been December 21st. That's why I knew, I missed this, I didn't check that, they put in the wrong, somebody put in the wrong soil logs there, so that's why the drainage elevations were kind of screwed up here. But we have all the details of what Norwood Engineering would want, planting, cross-sections, profiles, drainage details, stormwater management, road control. And then we have, of course, architectural drawings, basement plan, I don't know whether you want to go through these or not. Basement, these are 1,300 square foot units, first floor, second floor, two bedrooms. And you've seen the architecture. That's kind of the summary of this. Okay?
At this moment, I just want to take a pause and board comment. We have representatives in the fire department here, and if you'd like to speak on the fire issues that were raised.
One question about what you're going, is this going to be sprinkled? Are you going to sprinkle the buildings?
Yeah.
Okay.
Chris Cuddy, Fire Prevention Captain, Abington Fire Department. We saw these plans a little while ago. Obviously, our biggest concern is it's tight. Per 527 CMR Chapter 18, we are going to request a vehicle swept path analysis. If I can email, I'll email you the specs of our trucks, turning diagrams, turning radiuses. If we could just have your engineer do us a swept path analysis. Our big concern, another biggest concern that we have right now too, is the single-vehicle parking per unit. For us, first, we have two-bedroom apartments. We'd be concerned about parking alongside the building, parking outside the garages or the spaces. Obviously, if there's an emergency somewhere in there, somebody's parking illegally, or even just in front of one of the units, that makes it very hard for us to get around. Already in this diagram, in order for us to get an ambulance into that complex, we're not even talking about a tower, truck, a tow truck almost guarantees it's not going to fit in this complex. Our engine and our ambulance will both have to back all the way out in order to get out of this complex. It's concerning for us. I think that vehicle swept path analysis will show us more what we have for maneuvering room inside the complex. We do have a 20-foot driveway, which is the minimum code for us for fire department access. Obviously, that's curb-to-curb. That gives us no extra squeeze for that. The hydrants, we're okay with. We have plenty of access for the hydrants. The fire lane in the front, that's good for us to pull up to the front, but with a second row of, the second building behind it, if there's a fire in that, there's not going to be any access to that back building. There'll be stretching lines, significantly, over stretches from Route 18 all the way back. So we would like to see access to that middle driveway. I haven't seen the alternative plans yet, it's the first time I've seen that, so we would have to do that.
We can plug that one up for you.
So I think we'd have to see the diagram. We'd have to sit down with the chief and talk a little about it.
Sure. So this is the seven or eight, back.
Yeah. So 525, we have a little more space. Again, just turning up in between the two complexes, this is our biggest concern in both plans, is making that swing into the two complexes. You put a vehicle anywhere in there, that's going to pretty much block our access into the building, which makes us concerned. So tonight, I'll get an email for either yourself or somebody else to get you the vehicle specs for both our ambulance and for our engine.
All right. Any questions for me?
Any concern, you know, if there is or wasn't to be a fire, with the buildings 20 feet apart, is that an issue or is there enough of an air gap to, that is a condition?
Uh, it is going to be sprinkled buildings, that does make us feel better. Hopefully, the sprinklers can keep it in check, we'll be able to extinguish. Obviously, if it's fully involved, 20 feet, you're probably going to sustain damage to the other building. I don't think it's out of the realm of possible. We have buildings a lot closer than that in town.
Yeah. So I mean, we adopted a rule, I think, two years ago requiring, when it's 12 units or more, that there's 50 feet in between the residential buildings. So this, I guess, this is one of my concerns, is are the, is that alleyway too close?
We think the alleyway's really tight, and that's our biggest concern. But like I said, with the building right on top of the alleyway, chances are you're going to have a guest or somebody parking in front of that building at some point.
Yeah.
We have that problem with some of the properties in town that were made narrow, and now we're already having issues with it.
I was actually, not to get too far off topic, but there is one of the townhouse units off Center Ave where we built, you know, it's a driveway down and parking's in the back.
Correct.
But every time I drive by there, the parking in front of their units.
Yep.
And so I imagine there's no way you guys can get back there. I'm wondering, we need to send a letter to them saying, hey, guys, you are not allowed to park in front of your units. You need to park in the parking lot back, because of how it was built.
You're always going to have guests at deliveries, and I guarantee you, they're going to park there when there's an emergency going on.
Yeah.
It's almost predictable that when there's an emergency, somebody's going to be parking illegally in front of the building, so.
Okay.
But as I said, once we set vehicle swept path analysis, that'll give us a lot better idea what we're dealing with and what we have for space, and then we can submit a letter with our concerns going in there.
Anything to the turnaround time on that assessment, the letter?
I, once we get the vehicle swept path analysis, I'm sure we can get it back in a couple of days.
A couple of days, correct?
We anticipate, because of the work schedule you don't meet in August, you know, we, very unlikely we'd be able to update this plan and submit it back to you within a week, which is what would be required for us to be on your July agenda. So most likely, in much to Mr. O'Connell's dismay, I said, more likely, we're going to be seeing you again in September. The benefit of that is we'll have plenty of time to have a couple of discussions and tweak things up. And this is the beauty of site plan review, is the 20-foot driveway between the buildings conforms to the zoning code, and the parking actually exceeds the zoning code. But it's the reality that we need to hear from our fire department saying, yeah, even though 20 is what the code says, we'd prefer a little bit more. That'll all come out when we look at the swept analysis, you know, the size of the trucks and what they're looking for. We'll see what we can, you know, wiggle with, use an expression that was in the letter. So this is all helpful to us, and we'll try to help you as much as we can.
I don't know if they have a question for you, but I guess it's with the, part of the parking in there, that the existing building that's staying, I didn't see any parking assigned for it, and the front entrance is still facing the street, but there's no place to. I was wondering what you're going, how are you going to deal with that existing building?
See, that's the other part of the, yeah, there's parking, these two, there's two right here for this. This is the guest car. And each one of these units has two spaces.
So the existing house doesn't have a garage?
Yes.
Built in with it? So it has two spaces next to a dedicated. But in behind, we wanted to maintain a large trunk lot, okay? So this is all, you know, when the trees is, it's, we go by and see grass and trees, and we're going to see the buildings themselves. This building, the house that exists there, has the two dedicated parking spaces reserved for that house only. Each of these units has a garage and a parking space that is outside of that central driveway.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to let you go. Yeah, no, I understood that, and actually, it wasn't, wasn't, I don't know why I wasn't thinking about it when I saw it, when the existing house. I saw the additional park, and I thought, well, reasonably, that's probably enough if some, somebody had a small party or something like that, and unfortunately, it'd probably be up in that driveway.
There's three extra spaces down here and three extra spaces up there, we're going on opposite ends.
Right.
The minimum requirement for the entrance driveway and for this driveway is 20 feet. It can be, it says 20 to 30 feet for the zoning code. While we'll go into 24 or 25, you're just not getting people who want to park there. But we have, when you put it at 20 feet, if anyone parks there, they're inherently blocking everybody else. They learn, we'll have signs, they'll put that you can't park in the entrance driveway. So keeping it at 20 helps us to keep people to park in that, and it's curb, right, it's curb.
Yeah, because I would imagine, not knowing them, I'd see the building empty next door and go park in their parking lot anyway. If I was visiting, if it was crowded, I would...
Super Bowl party, yeah.
Well, birthday party.
Birthday party, yeah. And they want, I just want to know one comment that Norwood Engineering had made, that they were of the understanding that this was a minimum requirement of 25 feet. of the understanding that this was a minimum requirement of 25 feet. I respectfully disagree, because I think what they were looking at was the parking lot aisle is a minimum of 25 feet, but a driveway that leads to parking spaces is 20. So as I said, this is all designed to code, but it's something that, you know, we're probably will be revising before, between houses and then...
So going back to my original question, the architecture of that current building won't change. The, per the architecture for the other buildings are a different style, generally speaking though, however, correct?
Yeah.
Does it, I mean, any way that they're tied together?
Well, we'll talk more about that. At our next meeting, I'd have my son here, he couldn't be here this evening, but I'd have him address that, and I'll have him look into that, see if the, if the roof can mimic that a little bit more, because it's...
Well, I kind of agree with what you're saying. Actually, the new architecture is nice, I'm looking at it, I'm going, oh, is this just model generating this? Because framing these roofs like that is tough. But the big overhangs, I mean, that's what really makes the new architecture look great, it's got these huge overhangs, and you look at the shadow that he put on the drawing to indicate how deep it is. Nice, but like I mentioned, it's completely different from the house, which has got no overhangs, and it's a camberell. You know, it's just, it's just a different architecture. But I just, I guess, I think it's a reasonable thing to look at how to...
Okay, we'll take a look. Yeah. I mean, the units itself are nice, and the units themselves are nice, it's just, it's a weird conflict of what's there.
I think mainly the roof.
Yeah, the roof lines...
If the roof can mimic the existing house a little bit more, I think that would, that would work.
Um, I guess there's also a weird thing where, is the current structure going to continue to be a single family, or one per, one family in that? So does, this doesn't make it a single family plus...
Two better, it's still a two better, one, one family would be in that.
Does this...
Well, yeah, because then now you're putting a single family with a multifamily.
So I don't know if that raises any weird loopholes.
I think it would just be a master plan, traditional...
I'm sorry?
Right. It's part of a condominium association. You could actually have four, five, six, single units as a condominium.
Okay.
Or two blocks, you know, two unit buildings, three, it can be any blend. The only thing what a condominium is, is basically shared responsibility to maintain condominiums, private. So in this proposal as drafted, is the one-year building, the two-year building, the three-year building. That would all be the same one condominium association, so that the town does no plowing, the town does no maintenance, it's private property, they maintain it like any other condominium, most of them a brazier and...
So these units seem to be very similar to part of the development at the air station. There's a section of it where you have the sort of, I don't mean alleyway, but it's an alleyway, common access, access is off this, you know, 20-foot wide, and then it's really the rear of the house units, and then the front of it is someplace else, and there's more green space in front of it. I don't know if anybody's seen them. It's an interesting concept, I kind of, it makes sense when it's part of that larger development. I don't, it's not striking me right personally for this sort of one-off experience.
We had similar discussions, and that's why, again, we wanted, Mr. O'Callaghan was picking up a landscaping.
Yeah.
He wanted it, that what's it going to be, the streetscape to look like? And that's why, you know, you get a 40-foot deep front yard, the trees are landscaping, you'll see the facade of this house, and effectively, this other building blocks your view along with the trees of the building behind. So you would come down Route 18 and see grass, essentially a single family, and then a true family next to it.
I mean, that, one of my questions is, is the elevations for the Bedford Street view in the packet? I wasn't sure if I was looking at the right thing or not.
That was more of the, this one right here, is more of the view of that driveway between the building?
No, that's what I'm looking for, is, are one of these, did one of these pages contain the elevations if I'm standing on Bedford Street looking at it?
No, that's not. Those are the, the elevation of the architecture are of the two, the 40-inch buildings.
We could try to develop that in September.
Yeah, it's, I just, that's one of my kind of sticker points, is all right, how is this going to look from Bedford Street? Because I'm not going to be the one that's driving by it every day for the next 40 years, so.
You know, the, here's the roof plan, what you're, you're commenting about, you know, maybe we can mimic this more like the existing house.
I think one of the things we mentioned, he and I have talked about, I don't mean to interrupt you.
Yep.
Is that the back of the building is facing Route 18, and that's what it kind of, I mean, the front of the building's a nice way, and they're all facing each other, but the back of the building's facing Route 18. We've got a lot of complexes that kind of show their rear ends to us, which isn't very pleasant, and, you know, the gas, all the gas, everything you don't want to see behind the building is facing the street. So I just wanted to know how, that streetscape is, it looks...
Well, we'll do, we'll do an analysis of that view, but with the landscaping, and you have to realize, that's where the 40-feet of yard is.
Yep.
And so the outside space is important to the inside space of the house.
Sure.
The residence. So, these elevations, you know, this is in the driveway space.
Yeah, and that's lovely, it's lovely standing on the driveway, it's really nice. I mean, like I said, I think there's a, there's a little neighborhood like this in, at the air station.
We'll do another, another elevation of Bedford Street, to face Bedford Street.
Um, and one other note with our chairman, No More, and the board, we do have, we are a bit of a stickler when it comes to non-native species and the landscaping. And we do right now, I think, have Japanese maples, the genkobolova, which isn't native. So if there's a way that we can swap in some native species, I think that's usually our rule of thumb.
Okay.
No worries.
That's easy.
Thank you.
I would like to move on.
I did have a question regarding the streetscape. I'm glad you're very much interested in that, because I saw, one thing that sold me when I was looking at the plan, well, when I first looked at the plan, the first thing that grabbed my eye was the great, the great big-looking trees on the street, the streetscape, if those trees actually would grow to maturity, that would look nice, other than, you know, scrub brush. But I think that is a, is a really great way to address that part of the street, because just the way it looks down. So I, I just hope, I'm glad that's the focus for you, and that goes along with the architectural comments. One thing you may notice next door is, there's, I don't know if you call it illegal, that you'll get arrested, but there's an illegal, there's a light that's not next door to you that doesn't, shouldn't, should have been taken, never been put up, they put a big spotlight on the roof, and it glares on your property. So you may want to take something...
All the lighting is down there.
They got, they got the sun lighting up that side of the house at nighttime.
We do have the ability to talk with them, because the owner of that property is the seller of this property. So thank you for that comment, we can pass it on. It's not coming from us.
One other concern I have in, is, obviously, there's some ledge that's going to need to come out.
We try to avoid the ledge, I mean, it's something we talked about.
The ledge, we found, there's one little... There's one little section of both ledge here that goes up right through this, this area right here. And part of the reason, the other reason we have the entrance for here is to, so we wouldn't bump into that. However, we went to 10 feet on that hole of pure sand. So it's a very localized area, it's not a, not a big area. And we went up the top of the hill, and we, just to, to look to see, up at right there in that, that location, we dug another hole, just to locate where the, and it was down four feet, the ledge was down four feet, and it was all broken up. So I, I don't know the history here, and I know that there's been excavation of a face of lead right there, so there is a little bit of ledge that goes through, like, right in there. And this, they dug this, Mr. Fraser personally dug that whole area out, I don't know what they, what he used the fill for, but he told me he dug that area out right there.
You want to know the fill?
So, so we'll have minimal excavation of ledge.
Does that answer your question, Mr. O'Callaghan?
And there, there wasn't, and all, all, all six holes, there was no ledge encountered to 10 feet.
Yeah, I think the, the elevation of the ledge in your buildable areas of like 134, and I think you have to down to 128. So there's, I mean, there's a, no, talking thousands of cubic yards, but we're talking, there's some removal that needs to happen. It'll be a, it'll be a sheer face, it sounds like, at some point.
Yeah.
Okay. I'd be interested just to make sure how we're going to maintain that, if it needs any sort of stabilization or anything.
Bob, did you have any comments? We have some correspondence regarding this project. This is a letter to, can I just move a question?
Oh, sure. You'd some Norwood Engineering comment on snow relocation, the snow, we'll get thoughts on that.
So presently, our proposal with the snow level will be basically to the rear of the guest parking areas, which are the least likely used, especially if there's a blizzard coming. Our assumption is, is people are coming into the castle. That being said, that was, you know, the easiest place to put it was off these guest parking, and also down here.
That's what the original plan was?
This, what you have in front of you right now, that's what that comment was based on. He's asking us to look at alternative things, which I think will come to fruition as we work with the Fire Department about, first, what do we need to move of them, and then how does that relate to remove the guest parking, to remove the snow. So we know it's on our list to, to address. We actually, one of our original drafts had the hydrant down at the, the dead end part of the driveway, and we thought it best to put it back at the, close to the entrance part where it'd be easier. From the little I know about Fire Department operations I'm learning, it was better to move it there, and apparently they've agreed to that, at least in this part of the drawing. Same thing, we put the dumpster, so the truck, we learned that they like to come in head first, and then they would be able to back out and leave head first down Route 18. So there's a lot of moving parts, as the board's well aware, so we will just continue to keep updating it, but one of the earlier drafts, we actually had extra parking, we want to take out the forest, what an area that's out behind the residences, and we're trying to abandon that. Maintain that area and just try to make it all happen here. But I think we'll have, you know, a better, more detailed plan for you that we'll submit to you in August for your September meeting.
Thanks, Mike.
I'm very familiar with your work in other parts of the area, and my friends in Quincy speak very highly of what you do. I have significant reservations about the way it's currently structured with the buildings on both sides, the concerns the Fire Department have. If you come back and the Fire Department says, you know what, it's all good, we did this out, it's, it's not a concern, or it's reconfigured some way, then it'll be a different conversation. As it is structured right now, I just, I have a lot of concerns.
I have no intention to wrestle with the Fire Department, or the Engineering Department, or anyone here, this is just the beginning of the conversation. These comments are great for us to go back to the drawing board with.
Okay.
I'm big on landscaping, I'm big on architecture, I too am going to be driving by this property for 40 years, and I want to be proud of it. I want it to be great. I'm not flying in from some other state trying to do a project and leave.
Mm-hmm.
I'm here too, so I very much want this to be the beginning of the dialogue, and I think your comments have been super helpful and very direct, so I thank you.
Okay.
Any other comments? Okay, we have got some correspondence on this. This was from John Stone, the Director of the Abington Sewer Department. The Abington Sewer Department has reviewed your request for information regarding the Planning Board hearing scheduled for, and has the following comments, 657 Bedford Street. This proposal locator on SSS Plot 46, Lot 20, must be approved by the Board of Sewer Commissioner at a regularly scheduled meeting. And we also got a letter from Mary Ann Wong, the Zoning Enforcement Agency. Good morning, Liz, we reviewed the packet and just had some general comments. Extremely tight lot, they have three separate attached structures. Roadways seem tight for turns around the Fire Department, but I'm sure they will address their issues. Why is to propose alley drainage system, number one, on page four, located at the rear of the property, instead of behind units four and five. Of all seven units proposed, he proposed as two-bedroom, two-and-a-half bedroom units. Has the Water Department been approached to this project for approval by the Abingtons? That said, overall, it's a big project for this lot, and of course, at the end of the Norwood Engineering letter of June 20, June 1st, our recommendation, the above comments in particular show those relating to the stormwater design access to Bedford Street. The Fire Department should be addressed prior to approval by the Planning Board, since they may impact the overall design of the project.
Yep, we have no doubt about it, and as the board knows, we typically don't go to the Water or Sewer Commissioners until we finalize the site plan, so we can show them the same thing we're, we're showing you, and that, either that we're close to approval or have got your approval. Some of the comments from the Building Department aren't actually Building Department comments, they're kind of extraneous, but, you know, we know we have to go to the Water Department, they mentioned Water, we know we have to work on drainage, that's not really a building issue, but, you know, we'll, we'll address all that. And she mentioned working with the Fire Department, so basically what she mentioned is plenty more jurisdiction, so no news to us.
Well, it seems that I can't vote on this tonight, really, we could, but I think we should continue this.
Yeah, like I said, as much as I'd love to be back here in July, I just don't think physically, because the filing deadline is, what, Liz?
Friday.
This Friday? So we don't, you know, we have to have this done in four days, three and a half days.
I could bump you a week as a, what, a July, but...
And I don't want to put that pressure on the Fire Department either, because we'll probably have a couple of iterations, so, I'm sorry, say this, we would like to ask you for your, continue this to the September meeting, and we'll continue to work and come back with that.
So the good news is, our September meeting is the day after Labor Day this year. It's not a week later.
So it's, so it's a Tuesday?
Yeah.
Can I go on vacation after that? All right, someone like to make a motion to continue this to the September meeting?
Motion.
Motion, hey? Second, Paul Oss, the favor.
Aye.
All right, guys.
Thank you. And Liz, I'll work with you if I get copies of the, what was it, the Sewer Department letter, any other letters.
Yeah, I sent you Mary Ann's and...
Yep, got that, we're good.
And the chief's, yep.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
You guys should be able to work through the summer on...
Oh, yeah, Liz?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Liz, do you sense we're going to be having a bunch of work coming down our way the next... No, okay.
I mean, I'll know more on Friday, but I haven't even had a phone call about it.
All right. I'm open to always having an August meeting.
Okay.
If, if it's needed, I don't think it's unreasonable to, to do it, so.
All right, is there any other business that needs to come before the board today?
It's the discussion on the master plan goals, which is on the agenda. Rick Shepherd sent a worksheet, which I forwarded to everybody to take a look at. I did go through and very quickly provided some updates, like on the number and the quality of active recreation areas and facilities, Beaver Brook Playground, Rick, that's getting, that's getting completely repaired, right?
I think the place that is like sitting in the DPW yard, it's just a matter of finalizing the conservation rules.
Yep. And I've sent an email about potentially relocating the Central School Playground and actually making it a playground, instead of what actually exists, which is nothing.
Yep.
And I think there's work on other stuff. I think there was some CPA money. Anything coming to your brain real quick? I know, I hate to hit you upside the head quick.
For CPA?
CPA money for playgrounds.
We give a lot of money to playgrounds. Are you a CPA?
No, I don't, I, I thought I read somewhere that we were doing another playground this year.
Well, Woodstilts, I mean, the old ECC, that's...
That's being completely redone.
Yeah, that's all.
Yeah.
I know they cleared the trees and...
Yeah.
I mean, honestly, the real need is some field updates. As a parent who sits on these fields right now, they're all terrible. Well, terrible is a, I've said it worse, but they're all in need.
I was going to say, you weren't there when the high school was to the front and the back was a swamp.
Oh, I played there many years.
Well, so did I.
Yeah. But, you know, I sit up at Arnold and trust me, that field needs a do-over. And Ladler is, needs a complete do-over and?
Woodstail is apparently coming along.
I'm sorry?
I see Woodstail is probably coming along pretty nicely, I think.
Yeah.
Didn't they just do Woodstail not too long ago?
I thought we just approved the CPA money for July, so I don't know.
So that's, that's what I get, so it's Woodstail, right? I skimmed through it quick.
Some work's happening now, but I thought we had approved some for a year to come, which hasn't arrived yet.
Will be July 1st.
Yeah.
No, my, I think the money for the exceeded was the only stuff that was early.
Okay.
Woodstail work, I think, is largely complete.
Is it? Then it might have been CPA money last year?
Must be, yeah.
And more maybe this year?
I don't know. I think the group that uses it might have kind of fronted it a bit.
Oh, okay.
Just to get done so that it'll be ready for the summer season, which?
Maybe.
I actually thought it took three growing seasons before a field's ready, but that's a whole other thing.
Who takes care of the field? I mean, turning up the mounds and setting and striping?
It's supposed to be DPW, but Abington Little League pushes it along where they can. I think they hire some companies sometimes to come in and help as needed. And then, you know, Memorial Field is a whole other thing. We need a whole new master plan for that property as well.
And you're spearheading the Ames Noel master plan?
So that was part of that. I was going to ask, does the board want the presentation that I gave basically to the board of selectmen, which is our draft plan? It's ready to be approved, basically. So if the board wants at the next meeting a quick update, I can give a quick update as to what the master plan's going to look like, that we're going to be submitting to the state.
It should be great. Always a matter of conversation where it goes.
Oh, yeah. There were a couple other notes here. Yeah, there's a lot here that I really would like to see done, like, you know, to have some sort of festivals in North Abington Center. I know it's hard to turn down, I don't know if we can shut down 139. There are ways to detour traffic, but I don't know how hard it is to say, no, we're going to shut down 139 from Adam Street to Railroad.
Well, they can do it, but, you know, you're going to have to, that'd have to be advertised well in advance.
Yeah.
They'd have to reroute them. The problem with North Abington Center is the train. And it's the same reason we can't vote at the senior center, because of the train. And if traffic gets backed up on either side and, so that's, that, if somebody gets hurt at a festival and they can't get, and say, there's something going on on the other side of town and Rockland can't get over because the train's coming through.
Yep.
So, I don't want to be a Debbie Downer on it, I'm just saying, part of the problem, I mean?
Then maybe it goes down Railroad Ave. But, I mean, there's, that is where you should have like a downtown festival.
I don't disagree with you. We were trying to work on that for a winter one at one point.
There's stuff in here about Chestnut Street and at the very least, should we start making some offers to some of the landowners along Chestnut?
About zoning or what do you mean?
Oh, like buying the land through CPA and making it as part of the town-owned land, making it part of the state forest, or the state forest, but the forest that's in an area. I mean, the word is that the people who own Chestnut land don't want to sell, but at least we should, I think we should at least ask. And then there's another private landowner who owns a bunch of those properties right along Chestnut too. Again, it doesn't hurt to ask.
I would hate to see Chestnut ever become a road like Route 18 or something.
Yeah.
Double dump.
Yeah. And then there's a lot of work really, to some point, have a conversation about making it part of a larger tie-in with Holbrook, Waymouth, Braintree. I mean, that green circle's all the way up to Route 3 and Braintree. I mean, it's pretty big and goes all the way down south to Hobart, Meadow and Whitman. It's a pretty big area. I'll talk to Brockton about the Beaver Brook. There's one other. Oh. I want to coordinate with Liz about reaching out to Safe Roots to Schools, about getting an initial study about a path from the library out to, is it Broadmeadow? Not Broadmeadow, it's, uh, Broadmeadow?
Buckwood, Broadmeadow and Orchard.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Talking with parents, there's still a lot of kids who have to walk all the way around to Barry Road to cut behind the fields and then come on to the school. I mean, it's not just a dozen kids, it's, it's significant. And they work really hard to make sure that the bridges are kept up so kids can cross the river. They just had a trash pickup because it gets really filled with trash. There's a need for access to the back of this complex from Hancock Street.
Yep.
And looking through Safe Roots says two things. One, it creates that access for schools, considering this is now our center of our educational world. But there also must be a tie-in because it also would provide easy access from those coming off the rail trail, coming across the street, coming through the cemetery, going up Lincoln Boulevard, which just received Complete Streets money, going through the complex down Glenwood's Way, and then you're almost right at Ames Noel.
Yep.
And frankly, there's an entrance way to Ames Noel you could put right there. It's right next to John L. Sullivan Way, which is a whole other question to have. But there's a piece of, the park comes all the way out to Hancock.
To Hancock Street?
Yeah. There's a little sliver that comes all the way out. You could put a trail right through there and you're right in there. So, I mean?
Well, it depends on who lives on either side of?
Yes.
The pathway.
But if it's okay, I'd like to work with you, Liz, about looking at the Safe Roots as a grand opportunity to do some initiative.
We used to use those trails all the time when we were young, off of Hancock Street.
Yeah.
And through the backside, the backside. It's funny that you bring up Safe Roots from schools, Rick, because that seems to be a continuing, I attend the Old Colony Planning Council Joint Transportation Committee. And Safe Roots, the school seems to be a regular item, agenda item on that.
Yeah.
I can send you the link to those meetings if you're interested.
I think it's, I think it's an underutilized funding source. So I think it might be a great place to look. There's one other, it's on the watershed protection, it's Action 23. Nope, it's, well, it's in that area anyway. Oh, Action 11. To include with our potential bylaw changes, encouraging bio swells in rain gardens versus elevated green spaces. Right now, if someone has to do green spaces in a parking lot, it's, you know, they put curbs in, they fill it with soil, they put grass and soil on top of it and trees, but I think the new cool thing to do is actually make it more of a swell that filters into the ground. Ridge River State has a really great one, out back there, Science Building Bruce.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking like when, next time we have to do New England Art or something like that, that I think they had talked about doing like a swell versus, you know, kind of building it up.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, if you want to reference the issue with Chapel parking lot?
Yeah, so I'd like to maybe add this to our list of make this the standard versus what we currently have, which would check another box on our master plan.
Yep. The other thing I was going to try to do is there's, I think July 1st, we can clean up the weeds at Island Grove. We're going to go out to bid on that. And that will take about a year because it's going to be permitted through DEP and CONCOM.
It's just the water, cleaning the water?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's the, I can't remember the technical name for what they are, but you're going to see them pretty soon.
With Donald to the State Park. I think they did their third trade.
And it's the same company that I have a report for Island Grove for.
That'd be awesome because the weeds are out of control.
Yeah.
One other thing, and this would check two boxes, I think, is could we ask the new superintendent at the joint waterworks to come and have a chat? One about if there's any watershed protection issues that we need to take a look at? I know other towns are really protective in terms of putting really big restrictions on, you know, tier one watersheds or whatever the term is. And I don't know if we've taken that sort of look. And the other was just, they have a new report out, they have new regulations out, we haven't heard what it is. I'd love to hear what it is in terms of where the system capacity stands.
Oh, okay.
Plan to expand it or are we not going to be able to? And we have to figure out another way of, when we're approving these projects, on how we handle water. So I know some of her successors were not so eager to come talk to us, but maybe she would be willing to.
Can I schedule her for like September?
Whatever works.
If that's convenient for her.
Yeah.
All right, and what do you have?
If I may, so there was nothing really magic about the, what I put together. It was just pulling these, the things that you're going through right now, Rick, dropping them into a spreadsheet and then putting an area on the side for what are we doing?
Nothing is great.
Or what do we plan to do? For a couple of reasons. I think there's clearly things that are going on with other boards and committees in town that are contributing to completion of some of those things. And for my part, I don't necessarily know what all of those things are, so it'd be helpful for me to kind of see, you know, what's the group that's addressing affordable housing or the center school or, because some of these things, I think, have correlations back to the master plan objectives. And then on a going forward basis, like you say, to kind of periodically look at, to the extent that there may be some low hanging fruit on, on the plan, then let's identify what it is and see if we can push it forward a little bit. So if, if you're going to be the keeper of that, or I can, I mean, whatever works.
Yep, that's fine, yeah.
If there's, if there's something that's going on that contributes to an objective within the master plan, then maybe we can get that onto the spreadsheet so that?
Yep.
When we're sitting here at some point in the future, we've got a pretty good scorecard of here's what we wanted to do, but here's what we did, or what brought it, here's what the town did.
And it would be really helpful for other boards in town to be reminded that we have a master plan and that it's a good starting point for when they do their work.
Mr. Chairman, I was thinking that, it's nice that we brought this up. I think we could make it maybe a monthly agenda item that we keep this thing to life. Because I'm looking at this thing and some of the things are nice, the rest of it looks like, you know, unicorns and whatever. But it'd be nice if we can really solidify this thing and make it work something, I think you're right, make everybody know that it's all focused on the same thing. Some of these things are very broad and current.
Yeah, I think it's entirely possible that, this is from a couple of years ago and it was kind of documented was the town might want to think about or look at and, you know, maybe in hindsight, a couple of years, we look at this and decide, you know what, this really is not feasible.
Yeah.
Not something that we want to pursue. And, but we can document that as a conscious decision.
Yeah.
It's just we decided that this was really not something that made sense to pursue at this time.
So we decided tonight, we did master plan update, to do a couple of action items. One was to, you know, look at the redo and also look at the list of properties and things like that. And we've had, you know, a good discussion on master plan polls. And I think this is going to be a monthly item on our agenda moving forward as people, you know, have thoughts on this, so.
And if it's okay with you guys, then I will take this spreadsheet and send it out to Park and Rec, Open Space and Recreation, Affordable Housing, all those other?
Yep.
Committees that would be contributing to this. And then, thought just went right out of my head, I was going to send an email to the zoning board and let them know that you guys are going to start October on looking at potential zoning changes. If they have any ideas, they're invited to send them along, to come to a meeting or whatever, but to get that started in October because I, we're still going to do town meeting in April again, as of today, so.
We're still doing it in April, you said?
Well, yeah, he's going to try to do that to the charter schedule, which is great. Means more work up front on the, on the backside.
But no fall special town meeting that you're aware of? Okay.
Yep.
I think sending it out to the other town boards is a great idea, Liz.
Okay.
The one additional thing we might want to give some thought to is to try and direct the recipient to the specific area of the plan.
Yep.
Because if we just tell them to look at the plan and your eyes glaze over and roll back in your head, it's too much.
Right.
But if you can say, look at these?
This part is your stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Some of us find this stuff exciting. Well, I was a planner, professional planner for many years, so I find it exciting.
And just so you guys know, all right, so we have discussion of amendments to multifamily zoning on here. And I have not received a final draft from the state on that yet, so if you guys have anything you want on that. But then the other thing is, the center school reuse group is going to give their report to the board of selectmen next week. So that'll include the results of the survey and all of that stuff.
You were having some conversation with Senator Keenan's office, right?
Yeah, I was hoping to get something in the state budget that maybe would look at that and nothing, it's, yeah, happens. The earlier word was that there was going to be some movements about some of that stuff. So it's, there is going to be some changes, I don't know how significant, but?
Which leads me to believe we may not get it this summer.
Yeah, I, yeah, I would agree. But are we in pace so that when this does hit, that we're able to get the technical help from Old Colony?
What, so everybody's holding off on their technical assistance until?
Right.
For the most part, until there are not draft regulations?
Yeah, but we're not going to be, you know, foot dragger, so we're going to be ready to go.
No, we're ready to go.
Because I think we have good solutions if this is really what they want. I mean, I think we can handle it, but?
Right. No, and I have had that conversation with several people.
Okay.
About where to go and, so we're all set, just, we're looking for that. And then just the last thing I have for you guys is on July 1st, we'll get our CPA money. Thank you, Bruce. And we're not only going to clean the weeds, we're going to get a price on what it's going to cost to fix the bridge.
Yes.
And try to get that moving, because the arch is done, but the bridge needs to be fixed.
For real?
For it?
Memorial Bridge, yes.
It's actually money to?
Not the Route 18 bridge down in Whitman.
It's actually money to prepare a study for it, but not to?
And hire a grant writer.
Hire a grant writer, but as far as the actual cost and the bridge price?
But they're, they have a, yeah, they have, I don't know what you'd call it, but it's a study, I guess? And they're going to assign dollar amounts to it, so it's going to cost about $15,000 for them.
As I say, we've studied it so much, we've got to write a book about it, but we don't know what the cost?
What the cost would be. So it's going to cost 15 grand roughly to have the dollar amounts assigned. So we really don't know what it will cost. It's on our?
Priority number one.
Priority number one. You can just check that right off.
There you go. Couple other quick questions. The fire department, he reminded me that this has been kind of something in the back of my head. Like I said, there is at least one condo unit on Center Ave that is not, the parking, the parking next to the units versus in the back. And I have, I would like to send a letter or have zoning send a letter or whatever the situation is, what would be the best way? Are you even allowed to talk about it when you put it as an agenda item?
I actually, when you said that, I thought about that. I'm not quite sure how we would go about it because it's private property.
But it's blocking access to?
I would think that would be, wouldn't it be a letter from either the building inspector or the fire department?
But they're not violating, you know what I mean? They're not, they're not violating any zoning.
Well, aren't they?
It would be a public safety.
Public safety, yeah.
I have 27, probably, so it'd be, I can access.
Yeah.
Only reason I thought maybe we have a role is because they, when they proposed a plan?
Right.
This was not parking. This was driveway access, so they're not using the site as, as permitted.
But the person who permitted it doesn't live there. I know exactly what you're talking about.
So once you, once you permit something, something gets built and gets transferred, there's no, you know, they can start using it in violation of the orders?
Well, there's enforcement, but the enforcement transfers to the fire department because it falls under their jurisdiction.
Okay.
Right, it doesn't, it doesn't fall under us or zoning.
Make up all the extra personnel to take it on.
Okay, all right.
I mean, I'd be happy to help you if you need it, but?
I would also be interested in an update on the New England Art Building.
Oh, yeah.
I have, I have very strong thoughts on that, as I'm sure?
It'll blow away, yes.
I think you're going to need to take a ticket and step in line on your thoughts on that, but go ahead.
It sounds like they're building out a unit a year. So I mean, it's gonna take a while to finish.
They haven't even done that.
Mr. Riley is smiling because he doesn't have anything to do with it.
I, I would also want an update on the Rourke project.
Yeah, house?
Oh, one on, behind, up behind.
Oh, behind the field.
The field.
Because that's now going on three years.
Nothing's happening there now. Those two houses, one of them down the end of the track.
All right.
But I think that's, it looks like it's a dead project.
I don't know. I'm just very curious.
I'm writing everything down because if I don't.
So this is kind of a new business thing, sort of like as we're talking here. I was, when we, when we did the Zoom meetings, it was horrible as a committee, but what, what I liked about it was that viewers could watch from home and wait, maybe type their questions in. But I was, I know there's, you need a person to do that, but I wondered if there's any interest in bringing that back and making use of these TVs that perhaps don't even work.
So these don't work.
Yeah, that was.
Um, they're, I think they're looking to upgrade the room.
Yeah.
Um, over the summer, um, and that may make a hybrid thing more possible.
That, because they, you can't quite connect with that. I know that's an independent thing, yeah. Um, why?
Now, Sean volunteered to man up the computer while we're here.
Oh.
He's gonna answer the questions.
I think you have open meeting law issues to deal with.
With hybrid?
Yeah, with people who are here and not here. There may be a way to do it. I don't know.
Well, there still is now.
Yeah.
The governor has extended all of that.
Right. That was allowed by staff.
Right.
Because during that temporary.
And it's still allowed.
I just like the idea that, I mean, people seem to have a lot to say, but they're watching whole movies. But I like, well, people just can't get out. I mean, they just can't, they just get kids or whatever.
There's no doubt about it that, that remote Zoom access benefits a certain segment of the population. There's also a lack of control over who really is zooming into your Abington Plan Board meeting. It could be someone from anywhere, not necessarily an Abington resident. So it's, you know, there's danger to it also, or at least a lack of control. Um, it's also sometimes, you know, difficult, you know, for the proponent, the applicant, even the board members who are talking to live people with plans and then people away. Maybe there's a way to do it, but that's what I think a lot of people are trying to think how to do it. Even some towns are talking at a town meeting level about it and that's almost, well, you can't do it with open town meeting. It's impossible. Representative town meetings are looking at it a little differently. But, you know, I just, it's not an easy answer, but, um.
No, I'd just love to see something happen. I mean, I get, when I hear the conversation, we're in a small town where nothing happens. Nothing of any, you know, other than a fair or something like that, but, uh, it's like, I don't know what society, everybody's a conspiracy person and because they can't hear what's going on, they go, they think this board's doing this and that's what's going on. It's really weird.
I would like to give a shout out to Abington Cam for the amount of meetings that they, um, tape and put on the internet, on YouTube. So people can watch your meetings, even if they're not home tonight and couldn't be here. They can watch it at their leisure for, you know, anytime, um, for the next several years, really. So that's been a benefit to keep people updated who want to get the information. And a lot of links to the town website is now very much enhanced. That's great. I find it frustrating and I think, I know the board probably does too, that in this age of technology, it's almost more difficult to notify people and get some feedback because back in the day, everybody got the Brockton Enterprise or the Patriot Ledger and you had to set your notice and everybody, that's how you heard about it. And there was a lot of local newspaper. Thank God for our local reporter that there is some local reporting being done. Um, but otherwise, some people are only on Facebook, some are on Twitter, some are on Instagram, some don't do any of it and how do you, you can't.
You can't reach everybody.
I, I don't know. We get an empty place. I don't know how many times we have important things, no one shows up. And it's like, Jesus, Bill, break going right next to you.
And then they get upset about it.
But I think it's like, kind of to what Rick said earlier, Rick, Rick Shepherd. I think we get the word out to tell people where to get the right information. You know, go to Abington Cam and watch our meetings or go to the town website for accurate information. Don't listen to someone's comment on Facebook.
Right?
Might not be accurate.
Because if it's, I can forward an email to you guys or I can maybe answer the question or direct it if it needs to go someplace else.
Well, you, I think you kind of hit it a little bit, Sean, where people like options now. And, and one of the great things about when every meeting was on Zoom was like, I could watch every meeting no matter where I was.
Right.
Like if I was driving the car, I could have it on, through coming through my car stereo. I could, if I'm at a Little League game, I could sit there and listen to a meeting while watching my son play. You know, there's, there was a lot of different ways that I could keep track of these things. And AbCam is fantastic because I can always pull something up. But while it's happening, I also would want to watch it and just, you can't do a lot of live meetings. So it would be nice, because I know a lot of other states have more ability to do, you know, they broadcast their city council meeting live and people can email in questions and someone's there to monitor and guide them. And I, I know that's a whole other thing too. For, for work, we have a system where it's Zoom, um, and you can submit questions through it. And then there's a moderator there to ask that and they, they know who's asking questions. Uh, that way it doesn't get too crazy, but, um, I would like to figure out a way to do that because I think it's just, it's helpful to give people options.
Good luck.
Yeah. Any other discussion?
Uh, just a couple of other brief things. Um, I know Liz, you had sent out the email to us saying, I was about to work, we've been done up on John L. Sullivan Way and that you had sent a letter to somebody asking for additional information.
Yes. So Conservation and the Environmental Police visited the site and I believe the Environmental Police were going to, um, find them or review the situation and potentially find them. And I know Conservation, um, has an enforcement order on them.
Yep, nothing for us.
Nothing for us. They didn't disturb an acre of land or anything, so.
Okay. Um, last meeting, we, uh, approved 678 Adams contingent upon resolution of some of the road engineering items. Did we get any additional information on what's been done there?
So yes, um, Dave reviewed the revised plans and approved them. They were, they can, they included everything from all of his letters. Um, the special permit letter, I'm still waiting for something from him saying he has, um, done all the items in the special permit letter. I did get the surety and I did get revised plans that I can send to the building department. Um, I had emailed Mr. Nashawati and he didn't respond to me. And then I was on vacation and he emailed me while I was out on vacation. So I emailed him when I came back and he was on vacation. So he said he's coming in tomorrow. I told him I needed the response to the special permit stuff and I need a building permit application that I can have a board member sign. So when I get that, I will call Bob or to have him come up and sign it, but I haven't had the application. But as far as I know, everything, he's done everything except the special permit stuff right now. And he said he will have that, so.
Good. Excellent. Then have we heard anything on, um, Southfield redevelopment?
Nothing.
So I seem to recall that Brookfield is coming back with a plan this summer. But I've never heard a timeframe or, um.
No, and our representative to that changed. And I'm not sure who the new one is.
Roger Woods.
Is it Roger Woods?
Uh, Kevin's stepping down in August, I think, that way.
Is it August?
Yeah, it was so that he can give kind of, uh, Roger kind of a, some running room.
Transition period. Okay. Um, I can send an email to the town manager and ask him if he has any information.
If we, yeah, I mean, right now, any information is more than we've got, I think. And would it make sense to ask either Kevin or Roger to visit at some point, just to kind of bring us up to speed on what's happening?
I don't think Roger has the information right now.
Right.
Um, let me ask the town manager first.
Yeah, okay.
Well, indirectly to Southfield, but more directly to Route 18. At the last Old Colony Planning Council Joint Transportation Committee meeting, I asked about that second bridge. Now that's in District 6 as opposed to District 5, which is what Abington is in, Astor. But they are gonna reach out and they are gonna ask when that second bridge is gonna open. So that would be really good to have that bridge open. And if I find out, I'll let you guys know.
Route 18.
Route 18, bridge over the train tracks.
The new one?
It's done. It's just a matter of getting it connected.
It's, it's traffic coming right now.
Yeah. Except for if you have to turn into the South Postal Vet, which I've had to do several times.
Well, there is busy as the hospital.
Yeah, it's busy, please. All right.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second. All those in favor?
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Abington Fire Department for attending.